I call this meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think there was only one thing added to the agenda, and that would be on the new business, B, odd-even parking ordinance. Can you get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
On your favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Open forum, if anybody in the public would like to speak at the open forum. Okay, we're onto the consent agenda, approval of the minutes, bills, purchase orders, investments. Donation resolutions. Resolution number 2025-39, a donation from Orlando Lakes in the amount of $150 storage tomorrow's fire department pancake breakfast. Resolution number 2025-40, Mo's Lions, $1,091.47 to the city of Melrose for the light pole banners. Resolution number 2025-41, donation from American Legion Post 101 in the amount of $1,000 for the city of Melrose for the light pole banners. And if anybody has, go and take a look at them. They are for the Melrose Dutchman, so the city's time was just putting them on the poles. And then there was a finance director step increase. So can you get a motion to approve?
Second.
On your favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Police Department monthly report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. In our August report for the traffic area, we had 24 citations, 114 verbal warnings, nine written warnings, most of those were parking-related. 350 calls requests for service. There we go. For this year, last year's 266, we had an increase there. 2,265 calls last year, or excuse me, this year. Last year's 2,215. 16 agency assists, pretty common there. Ordinance violation that you guys had a abatement on did resolve itself at the beginning of, or at the end of August, so we have that taken care of. School's going good, which has been a plus for the first two weeks here, no school patrol flag violations or bus violations, so it's been good to see, and a lot of people are using the flow of the parking lot very well. I did talk with the superintendent, we appreciated the extra help that was up there from their staff the first couple of weeks, just to get people used to it, so we didn't have any vendor vendors in the parking lot thankfully. Other than that, nothing major change or difference in the department unless there's any questions for...
I had a concerned citizen reach out to me via email, and I attached Joe on it, or Bear Finkin, to it as well.
Can I get it too?
About golf carts and having kids hang off of them and driving down the streets. I know we allow it with a slow-moving vehicle, but I do cringe myself sometimes. If I see them in a cul-de-sac, I shrug, but if they're coming over the bridge and they're coming past, quick trip. It does make me pause a little bit when they got little kids in there, they're gonna get creamed or something. What do other cities do to, I don't know, is there anything we can do to safeguard? Is it, it's kind of all or none type thing?
So golf carts with their lack of safety equipment does lend it to those more hazardous situations or concerns. And that scenario, I think that we kind of discussed when this original was coming through six, eight years ago, whatever it was, in Longview, I think J.J. was still here when this came through, was the lack of safety options on a golf cart. And it has become more of a concern and more of an issue. We have had conversations with some people that, hey, you got six kids on here with you. You maybe have room for yourself and two or three others, because they got little bodies, but the ones that are standing and whatever else, this probably isn't a great idea. In the end, it's ultimately their responsibility to decide how much value they have in that young person's life, in my opinion.
And then if they modify...
Must we constitute something different where helmets are required for under the age of 18, or whatever else, follow maybe more DNR-related rules, like the ATVs required to follow.
And if they modify the golf cart from the original, like sometimes you see them, typically it's a two-seater, right? And they put the additional level on, and they can pack another couple of kids on top. There's no...
Well, they're sitting in a building board. Yeah, I haven't seen one that's been modified yet.
Or they have them rear-facing and you can sit where the clubs were.
Yeah. I guess if they're adding, they're adding this proper seat or something similar to that. We've seen people literally throw fishing seats you buy at Fleet Farm into the back of a side-by-side. They hold them down thankfully, but doesn't really meet the requirements, so we had conversations with them. So I haven't seen the golf carts have been modified yet, where they take the bag holders off and they add the seat into it. It's possible, it's out there, we've not seen it.
Is there an age limit on them, driving?
Driving is 18.
It is 18?
With a valid license.
Okay, 'cause someone did reach out to me about a 10-year-old driving them, so...
Yeah, and some of that education, because they drive slow and you want your kid to be able to do this, that, or another thing. You know, we're just in the neighborhood, and then just the neighborhood expands Dairy Queen, and then now we're, you know, at the high school field for some reason when we live on the south side of town. We've had conversations with people that would like to see that expanded because they do have an ATV or a DNR certificate for ATVs. Well, if they pass that, they should be able to drive this. But then there's liabilities and other reasons when something happens with that car or ATV that your age doesn't allow you to use it, or they got their driving permit, they should be able to drive a golf cart. Lots of areas of debate, but it was scribbled originally for senior citizens is what the original push was for. They're used to it in their retirement communities, and then now it's turned into, oh, this is cool to have, so I'm gonna go buy one, and now the kids all start driving them, and yeah.
Are there any restrictions on e-scooters, e-bikes for age?
A lot of, a lot of communities are creating their own ordinances related to those, to restrict them or to have some sort of framework in place for them. The great state of Minnesota is always behind on creating laws. You know, something gets built and something gets sold for several years before they go. And we probably need to figure out what we gotta do about this thing, because now they're maybe up.
To me, they would be equally, equally or more dangerous probably than the golf cart. I mean, a bike, you're cruising around, you're harder to see.
Yeah, I wouldn't argue that either.
Like a moped, you have to have a permit at 14 to drive down a public street, right?
Yeah, motorized bicycle permit, yeah.
But an e-bike, you don't.
Right. And there's some areas that do then constitute that under ordinance, that that's what they follow is the motorized bicycle permit, or those sorts of rules, more like a motorcycle endorsement style than just saying, well, it's a bike that's got a electric motor on it, we'll just call it a bike. So it all depends on how much regulation or restriction that cities might have on it for the most part.
Thank you, Chief Moss.
And then, of course, me, you know, I got that email I sent to you about the parking, you know, in people's yards. Is there a way we can please educate people on that? I mean, I know that I can't afford vehicles in my yard, you know, people can park on the street or use the neighbors, whatever, just 'cause there are some citizens that are seeing people are parking right in front of their house where their 911 numbers are, they're degrading the looks of the neighborhood.
And some of them have received letters with the photos, and Sheila and I went over them that we were following, or had all the proper verbiage in there, as far as, this is what the ordinance says about surfaces you can have them on, so those conversations haven't happened as far as what their intent is, if they're gonna move them out to city streets, so they're not on the front yard, just the plain grass, all those sorts of things. Or are they going to, yeah, we'll get concrete put in, or something in the future. The number of vehicles on properties, we do have our ordinance saying that there's four allowed on properties, minus visitation, blah, 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 you know, a whole bunch of whatever stuff that goes in there. The area that was expressed by council in the past is that, how do we regulate a multi-generational family, or a family that has four young drivers, mom and dad each have a vehicle, the four young drivers have a vehicle? Well, right now, we're, they all live in the same household, but they have six vehicles, not what we do. And obviously, a fair number of the properties that we're concerned about is so-and-so has a vehicle they drive for work, then they might have a secondary vehicle for, you got the commuter vehicle, you got the nice truck to keep on property, but then you have a project truck, and then you have a blah, 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 you know, where does it stop? Or where do we start regulating that number four to an extent? So it's been, I guess in the past, it's been more of a, what is the council comfortable with for scrutiny as opposed to what should we follow, follow our ordinance to the T.V.?
I think it's, one thing, if they're parking on the front lawn is, as regular, as a regular, it's different if you're like washing your car in the front lawn or whatever, but if, you know, residents don't have enough driveway space, there's five cars there, in my opinion, and they're parking on the front lawn all the time. That's, I don't know if it's a problem, but it doesn't look nice. Whether or not you have, the neighbors have a problem with it, I don't know. You know, is it devaluing, devaluing the neighbor's property? That's, that I think is more of, more of what the concern would be in my mind, is if the neighbors have a problem. Can you sell your property for what you think you should?
And I'd agree with, with that stance, is that especially in the winter, we are more of a, get it off the streets if things can be plowed, get it off the streets so that it's not in the way for future plumbing or whatever else, but by summertime, it's become a custom or whatever else. And some houses have actually, hey, this is what the ordinance is, it's what we needed to do in the summertime. Oh, they might know, they're probably didn't know, but there's others where it's often convenient just to keep on putting it back in the same spot. Do we have some streets that are more narrow than others? Yeah, we do. Do we want them on the, on the road consistently? Well, to meet the ordinance, we'd need them to do that, but then how narrow does that street get? Those are some of the areas of conversation or debate related to any of that parking stuff, so...
No good answer.
Right, if we put opinions inside of everything else, you know, then it'd be a different story that, you know, I don't understand your reason for this and your reason for that, but on the backside. If you follow what the ordinance says, then maybe we are making adjustments to a lot of people's households as far as what they have on property and what they don't.
Within reason. I mean, if they gotta run it up front yard, I mean, that's really hurting.
Yeah, and a year like this too, where it's been wet almost all the time, putting something on your, on your front yard is not...
And it is a good way for you guys to visit with the people too, you know, just educate them a little bit on some...
Yeah, and it's always, it's always been good conversations, and everybody walks with hand trees and good smiles.
Thank you.
Almost like a pleasure.
Yeah. Community Development Director Sheila.
Good evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission has a public hearing scheduled for their next meeting on Monday, September 29th, for a zoning ordinance amendment to the R2 zoning district related to public street side yard setbacks. This stems from that recent variance that we provided up in Highlands. The, the express of the Planning and Zoning Commission was, rather than a single variance, let's just go ahead and change the zoning ordinance. So we are gonna be looking at changing those setbacks in the R2 district to be in line with R1, so that if someone else up in Highlands wants to build in a similar way, they don't have to go through the variance process. What's good for one should be good for all, and make it match R1. We continue to talk about daycare challenges. We've completed a survey of families in the community, which was distributed by employers and shared on Facebook. We're gonna meet and review the results and consider ideas. MADA, at their recent meeting, reviewed some of the results and started to talk about, you know, possible things. We really are viewing daycare as a function of economic development, because as, you need employees, but employees need affordable and available daycare in order to be good employees. So that is why we are working on that. And in the community and development and planning world, it's all talk about roads and infrastructure, just like what Chief Moss said, it's all about the budget meetings lately. And then also, I'm gonna add, tomorrow at 2:00 is the homecoming parade. So I did hear from the superintendent today at the chamber meeting that if for some reason there's a washout tomorrow in terms of rain, they're moving it to Monday at the same time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. City Engineering Report, Dave.
All right, good evening. I'll echo what everybody else said. We spent the last month working on budget stuff, so it's ready for the approval this evening, and as we move forward through the first of the year. Other item, we got a bird bath over on Fifth that the contractor gave us. I started wanting to duck pond in our street, so he's gonna have to fix that, but so we'll look at those, a couple of items. Otherwise, I'm a little bit quiet on my end, and that's okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Colleen.
So in addition to budgets that we've been talking about, the other thing that we've been doing is analyzing, you know, obviously, all of our rates, our fee schedule, et cetera, which is all part of the budgeting process. We are also in contract negotiations with a, one of our unions. Those, we will be meeting with them for a second time next week. So cold weather rule goes into effect October 1st, and so we're just trying to educate folks about that and get them to understand what that is and how they can make sure that they kind of stay ahead in terms of their utility bills. Our second newsletter will be coming out hopefully here in October. And again, in addition to our AFSMI contract negotiations, we also are looking at all our contract renewals about this time of year, with our various entities and vendors. So that's where we're at.
All right. Say, I just wanted to, Joe, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, is our new city attorney?
Yeah, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Joe Krueger. I'm an attorney with Quinn, Levin &amp; Hughes in St. Cloud. Been practicing about 22 years, been in the area for about 20 years. Primarily worked out of the Long Prairie, our Long Prairie office. Have been doing city attorney work since about 2006 or so. So, yeah, looking forward to working with everyone here. We've already gotten off to a running start on a few issues with Colleen and Chief Moss, so, yeah, just looking forward to working with all of you and happy to help out wherever I can.
Thank you. Glad you're here. All right. We are on the action items, and I will be turning this over to Tony.
Oh, conflict of interest. You didn't declare that, but I'll declare it for you.
Conflict of interest for me.
All right. All right, resolution 6A, 2025-42, a resolution opting to increase the benefit level for firefighters who are vested in the volunteer statewide fire, volunteer firefighter retirement plan. Tom Booty has some information regarding that.
Yeah, thanks. Quickly, I wanted to do a quick overview. I know we've got one council member here, and I don't know, maybe two that haven't heard how this program works. I thought I'd just do a quick overview for you guys, talk about the annual review, and then move on. I guess I missed a really good budget meeting, I guess, before we really start, but anyways, back in 2013, we moved over to this para retirement fund. So what it is, is we are with a group of other fire departments within the state of Minnesota. They pool all the money together. Our funds are separated, yet all in one. Members, para sets the rules. So for a member to be qualified for para, they have to be on the department at least five years, then they're 40% invested. 20 years, they're 100% invested, so between years 5 and 20, 4% increase every year. Payouts can't happen until they're at age 50, so if someone were to retire at age 42, their funds stay in that until age 40. These are all rules governed by para, so we can't set that change.
Quick question on that. Do they get the level at retirement that you have that year, or do they get the level that is established at, 10 years later at 50?
Good question. No, they get it at the level that where, when they retire. So if I, if someone retired at, and it was $3,000, $3,000, $3,000 a year, that's what it's at. And the really, kind of, a little kicker to the pants it is, is they don't get any interest on that money either. So that money that's sitting in there on the deferred amount stays into the, into the pool, and, yeah, so it's kind of a little longer for them, but, so yeah, no good question. Every year I come to you guys, we do this annual review. Included in your packet, there should be a document that looks something like this here, it says revised on there. Para puts that out every year, and within that document, it shows how well the funds are doing, and lets us know, can we do an increase or not? And so they forecasted what it's gonna be out, what it's gonna be like towards the end of the year. So I come to you guys every year, whether it's, you know what, we can do an increase, but here's what the funds look like, so very, very open about it and how things go. Last thing is, how, how do you fund these types of retirements? How is the money getting into here? So there's three ways that the funds, this fund is funded. One is our 2% state fund, insurance money is what we call it, the fire insurance money. So as the city grows, the percents grow, and on page three, if you want. You had a little time, last year, the, the insurance money was at 36, 36,000, just a little over 36,000. This year was 41.9, so the increase in the businesses, increases in the residential helps this as well. So that's one way. The other way is through the budget. $10,000 is set aside from the budget to fund this. And then the last piece is the interest that we gain on the fund itself, so. Mentioned, it's in the letter, or in the council packet tonight, that we're proposing a $400 increase that would bring us up from up to $3,700. The fund puts us at a 105% funded, so we are more than funded for, in the event that we don't have a good year next year, or the markets fluctuate or whatever. Past nine months, the funds, the markets have done well, so I just, I feel, and the department as a whole feel that this is something that contribute, that we do, we put in the time, we put in the effort. We do a lot of community events, call volume, haven't talked about that lately, but when I joined in 2001, we were at 78 calls, 70, yeah, 75, 78 calls. We've been up to as high as 148 late recently, so there's, there's a lot of time and effort going into the calls. And I think the guys at the department as a whole, they deserve it, and it helps with retention, whether we get new members or not, so with that, I'll open it up to question. I hope, I should probably say one other thing. Increases per para, you can increase it, but we can never put it down. So once the increase is done, it's there, so just, it's a, I'm very open-minded about it, and I feel very passionate about, about the program, and I'm passionate about this $3,700 too, so.
And I, I was the rep for the Council on Fire Relief a number of years ago, and I had a heartburn over the levels that I was going to, but learned a lot about it, how it grows. You know, my only question was, at the time, was if we have a market crash, it happens from time to time. You know, market crash, then you have two guys, you know, so the fund goes down, let's say 20%, 30%. Then you have a guy that, or a couple of guys that retire at that 3,700 level, pulls the big chunk of change out. Now you have that much smaller of a, what do you bank to grow when the economy comes back? So I think at that time, we kind of like, yeah, you know, 103%, that's plenty good, 104%, that's plenty good for fully funded. So being, it's really, I mean, there's no impact to our general fund, basically, the increase. There's no tax lev, takes, tax levying, nothing. So in my opinion, I mean, that's perfectly fine level to be at, to 3,700, that's what it's there for, so. If I can get a motion to approve, I'd be fine with that.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
So it would be Jackie, and it's a resolution number 2025-43, resolution adopting proposed tax levy.
As discussed during the council budget session, resolution 2025-43 sets the general fund levy at $1,694,000 and the debt levy at $80,000, for a total levy amount of $1,774,000. This levy provides funding for essential operations and scheduled debt payments. An approval of this resolution is required for certification to the county auditor. At this time, the council may consider a motion to approve resolution 2025-43.
All right, so there's actually two different motions we have to make. The first one is the council to take action on the proposed resolution. Can you get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
On your favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Council to take action to approve the preliminary 2026 budget. Can you get a motion to approve?
So moved.
What is the, do we say the numbers?
The total levy is $1,774,000.
Okay, just want to make sure that was communicated before we just, you know, prove it, and nobody knows what it is, so.
So doesn't it mean you second it?
Second.
Yeah, this is second.
Okay. On your favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Okay, then blower building technical memorandum?
So this is actually a utility project. The reason that you guys have to sign off on it is because of the land that it essentially sits on. You guys own it. So it's a technical memorandum. The Waste Water Department met with S.H. on the blower project, and the department is requesting different-sized blowers than what S.H. had recommended. There was a technical memo prepared by S.H. outlining its basis for the blower equipment sizing recommendation, and an acknowledgement by the city staff and the PFC as we move forward. So the council to give consideration, concurring with the Public Utilities Commission approving the technical memorandum. The bottom line is, our guys want smaller blowers than what S.H. was recommending. The thought process and how they feel about it is that they would have an opportunity to put a larger blower in it. There's room for it at a later date, but they want to be able to have the ability to ramp that down on the weekends when there's not as much flow coming into the plant. And that, you know, they know their plant better than anyone, and so I think it was just out of an abundance of caution that S.H. wanted to put this memo together, so that's where we're at.
Where does this put us? Being, this has come to ours. Normally, we don't have to move much down there at all.
We own the land. The city owns the land.
Yeah, but what does that, why does that matter?
I, they just asked that you guys sign it.
It sounds, honestly, it sounds like we're putting ourselves on the hook for something.
Nope, you're not.
No.
We're taking full, full liability, because we're not doing exactly the design that S.H. wants. Does that...
We as a, we as a city, I mean, we are acknowledging that. I would say that, that, yeah, we are.
Yeah, because if it doesn't work, it's going to be 100% our dime.
Yep, we kind of talked about that at the Public Utilities meeting, yep, we did.
All right, can I motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Can you get a second?
Second.
On your favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. TriCap transportation contract.
Yes, so in your packet, you had the yearly contract with TriCap along with the leadership numbers. This is something that we approve every year, and I would recommend that the council give consideration approving it again this year. TriCap is a very needed service in our community. It is one that is well-used, and so I recommend that the council approve it.
All right, can you get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any question?
I was just gonna ask, we do have other participants, right?
Not right now, we don't, but...
So Centricare is not participating, or?
Uh, Centricare the school, nope, but we can certainly go and ask them to provide us with participation.
Centricare did visit with us and said that they would like a letter, so they can look at it.
Yep.
And I think, we need to get that out here soon to them, but I, I agree, it'd be nice to get some buy-in, but yeah, let's just... And even if we can just maybe get a copy of what the letter is, just send it to us.
Yep, I can email you.
Yeah, let's just try to get it out this, you know, by next month, for sure.
Oh, yeah.
So can you get a motion to approve? Oh, we have a first and a second. On your favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we're on the old business, resolution number 2025-32, resolution establishing fire escrow account.
Round three. We are here tonight to talk about the fire escrow fund, and we have everyone in the room tonight. So Chief Booty is here to talk about how he feels about this. Attorney Krueger is here to talk about his opinion on the changes that we made to the resolution from last time. So last month, we were here, and you wanted a more clear definition of if we bought into this program, or if we decided to participate in this program, what our guidelines would be in terms of when we would return the money and what it would look like. And so in your packet was a revised resolution outlining a little clearer. Attorney Krueger has given his opinion, and he, I'm gonna invite him up here to share. We had talked about returning it as soon as there was a building permit or a demolition permit. I believe it is your opinion, that doesn't address the health and safety concerns enough. He'd rather see it at a point with which the health and the safety concerns have been cleared as a threshold.
All right. This thing still gives me heartburn. I don't really like it. It's the taxpayer, or their independent insurance, they're paying the premium for. I did say, if you revise it, I'll vote for it. I will vote for it, but I still don't like it. Their, their, their insurance, we shouldn't have their hand in our pocket, but that's... I do see the other side too, where you're protecting the taxpayer as well, though, so it's somewhat of a compromise, I guess.
Now, if somebody has a big loan mortgaged out on their property, obviously, they... Now, if somebody has a big loan mortgaged out on their property, obviously the mortgage company gets paid first. Their primary, I'm sure their primary beneficiary is the insurance policy.
Normally, they would be named as the last payee, yes.
Right. So if somebody has ninety five percent or even eighty percent out on their mortgage, you know, it's, now you're gonna take the other twenty percent. And people that are the last twenty percent or whatever of the um insurance proceeds that they would have got. So basically, they don't get anything to work with right off the bat. Would that be accurate?
I think that would be accurate and I think um one of the adjustments Attorney Kruger made to the language is that the twenty percent then could be paid out directly to the contractor, whether it's the demolition contractor or the contractor that has been hired to start. So technically, they can use the money as long as they're using the money for its intended purpose, which is dealing with the health and safety concerns.
Right. And on that note, I don't know what it costs a demo house, but in my mind, the only thing we would really need is the cost of the demo to hold. Demolition, turn that lot back into a flat lot, so we don't have, because the whole purpose of of it is, is to get rid of the health and safety hazard of the burned house, right? So to get rid of the burned house would be kind of the goal to reach. And I don't know, you know, talking twenty five percent of a three hundred thousand dollar house, that's is that seventy, seventy five thousand dollars?
I would say up to like twenty or twenty but.
Wasn't there an up to?
Up to twenty five percent, yeah, yeah, right.
If you feel that, if you guys feel that it's a little lower, then you could.
Yeah, and that's why I was wondering is if, if there's some way you can get a high level, right, as soon as a fire happens. High level estimate, what would it cost a demo that? And base your, your take on that or whatever. I think that makes sense in my mind, so.
Yeah, just I, it's, it's a way to protect, uh we've had over the, even the eight years that I've been on uh there's been houses sitting around empty that have been burned out and frustrating to drive past it and then see nothing done. It's, it's, it's going down real fast, so we could help protect the city and the community as a whole and I think it's a good thing, so.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
On favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose. Motion is carried. New business, InSpectra on uh rate increases.
Yes, I guess I'll do, this is just a matter of information, InSpectra has notified us of a permit increase um starting January first. Um in your packet was their letter, uh so flat rate permit fees including reshingles and reciting right now are currently at one hundred dollars, they're going to one twenty five. We have an automatic contract with them on March of every year. Uh just putting it, especially with budgeting going on, we just wanted to make you aware of this change.
Do they come through town weekly? Like, you know, if someone does shingles, do they get these inspections?
He's here all the time because we got a lot of different stuff and normally he'll do some final inspections while he's here inspecting the other things, so.
I don't know, the travel, it's not, Ziv got up there a number of years. The gas is right where it was two years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Cars are more expensive though.
Do we have to make, we don't have to make a motion on it, so. Alright, then we are on to odd and even parking ordinance.
Uh bringing this forward for a very discussion for the council, um talking with Andrew from Streets about um snow removals, what this concern is. Um we do have a twenty five, twenty four hour parking ordinance um year round. Uh winter seems to be the biggest headache related to it, obviously. And we wanted to figure out a better way to try and get cars moving more frequently or at least on a consistent basis. Um our department tries to do parking as consistently as we can, um but we do have our nights where we're too busy to do that and or some it's like, well, there's no snow for six weeks, but why do we care? But I think um it's got to come more to a point of, we need to be consistent in what we're doing as well as we need to be able to do things on those years that we are getting dumped all the time and the street crew is trying to get things cleaned up. And what we have been seeing on the twenty four hour side of it is that parking a spot, it snows, plowed around, moved literally a car length ahead and now said pile's still sitting there. Uh the street crew can't remove it because it's too close to the vehicle that literally moved a parking spot, so they can't really get things cleaned up, get solid. It's, it's, gets dangerous long term or they can't get it to move with their equipment. A lot of communities go to no on-street parking in the winter. I don't know if that's viable option for some of our areas of town that don't have off-street parking, whenever you're going out to access whatever those sorts of ideas were. So that's why we went to looking into an odd even parking, um is what it is, it's in the, in the title of it. Even numbered nights on the calendar, you park on the even side of the street based off the house number, odd number um calendar days, you park on the odd side of the street based on the house numbers. Pretty simple to do as far as figuring out the what and where on it. Uh we would provide a bunch of education into it so that people would get used to it, a bunch of written warnings up front. Even proposing within our office, how you get a big orange sheet of paper that comes with it explaining this thing so it's not too far off base when citations maybe start flying. We did have a, a gap in there as well for the, I get done with work at four, I'm on the proper side of the street, but now by midnight, I gotta get it moved. Well, there's gonna be a gap and there's some times that I talk to the street department with that they'd be agreeable to as far as, here's kind of a free for all zone, just make sure you haven't moved by this time to the proper side of the street, so. Those are some of the things that kinks that we worked out. Um I did work with Mr. Kruger on this. Been a nice transition, very responsive from their office, so that's been good to see. Uh some areas that we have some questions on or some areas that we have kind of some special areas is apartment complexes that are maybe in areas that don't have um a whole lot of outlets for it. Rosewood Manor, prime example, they have a few stalls in the back, a lot of their tenants park in the same spots and same places. Street crew has worked with them in the past, hey, we're gonna be plowing, make sure everything's out of the way, you have to get it moved. A lot of times they put it back in the same spot. There's not enough space on either side of the block, about everything from that neighborhood, you know, so there might be some exceptions to the rule to an extent, but um just a proposal we have. Parking fines would be the same as our other parking stuff, which we're proposing to change in next year's fee schedule a little bit, but for the most part, we want to work with residents as best we can because ultimately, we just want the streets cleared. And we want them to be safe. We don't necessarily want to penalize people, but then there's always the people that choose not to um put the effort in to make sure that their neighbors and everybody else can take advantage of the clean streets, so. Area of discussion for everybody.
Is it only for when it snows, otherwise it's?
It'd be November first or April, April first, we'd want to try and, like I said, make it consistent, not so it's just, well, we got an inch, but it's a Saturday, so I know they're not coming up to plow, it's plow, so I'm not moving. Well, we got, you know, we got an inch and a half, but it's Tuesday, so they're coming, but I didn't look at the calendar, I, I forgot about it. So if we keep it consistent as far as just every day, you're basically flip-flopping what side of the street you're parking on. If you have to use opposite, you know, on-street parking, it'd probably be the easiest and most consistently. Then we get people moving more than, you know, more often than every twenty four hours.
How about if we have, we've had some years it doesn't snow till late December. Are we still gonna enforce it?
Well, and that, I think upfront, we definitely want to, we definitely want to get the education out there.
Right.
Get people used to it because it is gonna be a new ordinance and those sorts of things if you move forward with it. But we, we do want, we can have some discretion there, just the concern is, is that, like I said, we get a November, we get a mid, mid-December before we finally get some significant snowfall. Okay, yeah, maybe we don't have to work as hard on it right away, but we do want to make sure that people are educated on it. And with people moving in and out of different properties, it's something that might be each year, it's a little more education that happens. I just don't want it to be that, oh, well, you know, we don't do it when it's a half inch, but also it's an inch and or, or it's a half inch during the weekend, guys are cleaning up or whatever, but now we want you to do it. You know, we want to try to have some consistency here so that the residents understand and all that is just worked on, or worked on significantly.
And you couldn't do it by like a snow emergency or some type of?
That would stay in the ordinance already. Those are six inches or more and they gotta be um advertised and put out there, whatever else, so. A lot of, everything would basically stay in our current ordinance related to snow or related to parking, those sorts of things. This just gives us the ability or at least the knowledge for people to keep them moving so that cleanup days or, or just plowing in general. It's more efficient for our street crew.
Um is, is there, you know, I, whatever, I agree. Is there any way we can do something like the school has with, you know, calling? You know, have a text, mass text sent out to people too? I mean, is there multiple ways like saying, hey, uh it's snowing, you know, something manager can send out on like?
We put it on the app, but not everybody has that app.
Well, texts.
We could do it.
I mean, everybody has the utility, you know, of the places. It's just another option to add to it. I don't think it would add too much more time, because I know, it's just something. I'm for, I'm just saying, can we just look into that too while we're doing all this? Um that was.
Oh, we use the emergency sirens and tell them to let everybody know.
Half inch of snow is coming.
After that, plows are coming, move your cars, right?
Midnight, there goes a siren, change your car to the other side of the road.
The rumble a block and a half away or to the one near, but maybe isn't it?
If I remember right, haven't we gotten yelled at for just turning on our sirens for the fire trucks when we go to town? Get yelled at for that?
Fire trucks happen to do that.
Whatever. Um how do you, how do you feel about it?
I agree with it, yeah. Except for, except for I don't know where I'm gonna park on my street, because I live on a curve.
I understand the need, but I also understand the, the, if there's no snow, if we're not getting any snow, why does people keep having to do the dance from one side to the other side to wherever, all, every single day or what? Uh I don't know if I'm understanding that right, but I think it's every day, right?
Yeah, it'd be basically daily besides, you know, you have the thirty first and the first, okay, then that, those two days you could stay on the same side. It's more or less the consistency of it, trying to keep people moving forward those chances.
All cars on one side, all cars the other, plows come through, clean up the other side the next day, right?
That same time.
Tony, just stay parked in your driveway, it'll be fine.
Yeah, and I'm not even worried about that. I'm thinking back to when I lived in Freeport and I got a ticket, it was November third and it was sixty degrees out and I had a, had a snow violation parking ticket on my windshield in the morning. I'm like, what is going on here? I don't, so anyway.
Right, and I think the education side of it, especially year one, is going to be probably social media, utility billing, billing, those sorts of things and trying to just because we do have a lot of dry Novembers.
Yeah.
Or non-plowable Novembers, but we do want the public to be aware that if there's snow in the forecast, this is probably gonna be a situation.
Get in the habit of it if there's a chance of snow, yeah.
And I don't know how many claims we get a year, but if we don't hit stuff with plow trucks, then.
Right now it is, yeah.
Alright, where are we at, council? I'm looking for a motion.
To approve this or what?
Yeah, it's in there.
No, no, you have to send a public hearing.
Oh, send a public hearing, okay.
We'd present the ordinance next month of year in favor of it and like I said, like Tony said, I agree. Plenty of education upfront, citations don't need to roll out, especially on the drive, Novembers, the, whatever else. But it, we want to make sure people are on board or at least aware of it.
And these would be administrative plans, right?
Right.
Not they were going, all these things to go out in the county because whatever, and we get ten dollars out.
Right, but it would follow, it would follow our current practice as far as first citation, uh second citation, we generally try and get ahold of the property and say, hey, you got two, you know, generally there's a written warning that's hanging on there, then there's a citation, there's another citation. It's like, hey, one more of these and this is gonna get towed, and then the third one is a tow and they gotta pay the citations and all those sorts of things, so. We try, we try and work with people as best we can, but on the backside too, it's, it's been out there for X number of days with snow on it and whatever else and we haven't made any effort to move it. Hate to say it, but I don't feel like knocking on your door either, because you're too lazy to do your own thing, you're fifteen below zero, so here comes the tow truck.
Yeah, exactly, well, that's what I'm thinking is you leave it up to the, implement something, if it snows and you happen to be on the wrong side of the road, Jacoby, Jazer, or the Cowan brothers, they'll be happy to come grab your car to move it for the tow truck. Because it's your responsibility to get it moved so the plow can plow the street. They don't move it? It's easy fifty bucks for the plow company or whatever, you know.
You can't find a plow truck for under a few hundred dollars and all, that's a bad thing.
Well, that's true.
They're getting a little out of hand with their pricing, but.
I don't like the every.
You could cut it up, I bet if they had a mass, mass customer like we would be for snowstorms, they'd give us a good deal on.
As a utility, we, as a city, we don't want to be their best customer. That's not very good for our backs, basically.
They do do contract rates with cities though, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want that.
I, as Mark mentioned about, concerned about the everyday, there are some cities that do the first week, you're on this side of the street, second week of the month, you're on this side of the street, then there's variations as far as, well, technically, this is, you know, it's a new month and now it's a Thursday, so where do I need to be and those sorts of things, so there are some of those that are set up that way as well, where you're moving on a weekly basis. Concern with that is then on one side of the street is not plowed for a whole week potentially, so.
I know it's a huge pain for Andrew and you Craig, but at the end of the day, they are paying all of our, you know, salaries too and we're supposed to have their best interest in mind. So if we're making an unnecessary burden for the citizens of Marros, I don't, I don't particularly like that. So I, I get it when it snows, a hundred percent, but if you're doing it every other day, trying to keep track of that, I, I would be a nay on that, but.
And like I said, I think the snow side of it's, the, the focus that are off, are, I mean, we use discretion on a lot of things now, yet, is that it's the, the concerning part is that if people aren't educated far enough in advance as far as, that's where my biggest concern is, is getting the education out there and making sure people are aware soon enough so that when the snow does fly, it's, okay, I knew this was coming, it was my mistake, I didn't get it.
And, and I also want to, want government to run as efficiently as they can and to have these cars parked there, because there's a lot of cars that are parked.
Yes.
You know, then the plow trucks gotta come by again.
If it works, then I think the homeowner would actually appreciate it, to be honest with you.
True, makes parking a lot easier too.
Unless you're working, I gotta send someone over to get my car moved before I'm ticketed or towed.
Well, and that's where it's, that, that kind of open areas is that it kind of played into, okay, the night people and, you know, people at work nights, people at work days, those sorts of things. Here's that, that window where, hey, before I go to work, I'll get it moved, or as soon as I get home from work, I'll have it in the proper spot for the potential snowfall and those sorts of things.
Something's gotta happen, I think, because I know it's, it's awful, every winter it's awful, there's lots of streets with lots of big cars, a lot of remarks and uh.
But Craig, is the percentage, what is the percentage, it's the same ones that just?
Well, and that, that's what I was just gonna say next, it's gonna be, the four cars that have been the headache beforehand are gonna be the headache still. It's just a matter of the people that do move them consistently now, because, yeah, I park on the street because I, I go to work every day and I just have to park on the street. I don't have a garage or I don't have enough room in my garage for said vehicle. Those people won't be the problem. They'll be the ones that, well, this is a vehicle that I use, but I don't want to put it in my garage, so I don't want my garage available for, you know. So my car's doing when I go to work, well, you leave it on the street isn't appropriate either. Might be a better option for it.
Right.
At least in the winter months. We just thought, like, like we talked about efficiencies.
Do you want it brought to the meeting next month with that and some other options? Is there some other options like, like I just said? I'm just asking, is it fair to, that, you know, we send out a, a mass text message or, you know, goes phones like the school does? Just that everybody gets it, that's part of the, I, I don't know, I'm just.
Sending up every day or only when it snows? Because written as it is, it's every day you gotta move.
Yeah, I know, and that's where if it snows, that um.
Did you move your car today?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Stop, stop.
I know, is that something also maybe, you know, like schools two hours behind or, you know, we have that type of stuff? I just want us to.
I just don't know if we have the technology to be able to do that right now. That's the challenge that we're faced with is the school has that technology, we don't, I have that capability to do mass text messaging. What we could do is um we could put some stuff out on Facebook or we can have stuff for people to pick up at the front. Put it maybe in businesses to get opinions, I don't, I guess what are, what are you asking?
So if we, let's just entertain this for a second. If we would go and we'd say on even days, if it snows, you have to be on the south side or east side, whatever, the street. Odd days, you have to be on this side, if it snows. Get the education out there. If there's cars not moved, you get a ticket. The problem would go away real quick after the first ticket, I think, if you just made it when it snows. Does that make sense?
I would support that then. If it's only when it snows, so you're cleaning up, otherwise it's just a burden for people to keep having to remember.
Or, yeah, I mean, anytime you think there's gonna be a chance of plowable snow, you gotta have your car on the right side of the street, otherwise you're gonna get a ticket. If it still doesn't work, next year we could tighten it up and say, alright, automatically, every day, it's.
I don't think there's anything wrong with them putting though the dates from October first or November first through April first or whatever. I don't think, I think you should still have that date in there.
Or is that too much of a burden for the police department because now we're only ticketing people, or when you make the judgment call or when you guys make the judgment call to plow or sand?
Well, what if it snows in the middle of the night, it becomes at four AM, and those cars, those people aren't moving?
Right, yeah.
True.
Yeah, I think the judgment would come as when is it plowable snow? If it's Sunday morning, it's less likely. Yeah, I think the judgment would come as when is it plowable snow. If it's Sunday morning, it's less likely to be a plowable event than it is during a work week. So then there, that's where some.
Yeah, because, yeah, because we're not always waiting twelve hours to plow the streets, especially with the big snows.
Yeah.
But that's where my point is, if you think, if you're expecting snow, you have to be on the right side of the street, whichever it is, because it's snowing.
I already watch the news.
Okay, but, but a person like me, I don't watch the weather. I do not watch the news at all.
I would be getting a ticket.
I would be getting a ticket, or I just will be parking on the odd even times.
Well, and guess what, after you get a ticket, you'd be wa- after you get a ticket, you'd be watching the weather.
I'm just gonna park in my driveway.
I mean, you still have the option to change your, put your car in every, you have that option.
I know, I know.
Just in case.
And I don't know, Joe, have you, have you written ordinances like this for other cities where they've had these discussions or had these issues?
I'm getting a little heartburn here because I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna determine what's a snow.
Right. I mean, we like black and white, but yet black and white, we need gray.
I feel like we're just.
Well, anytime they get the issue of ticket, it has to be clearly articulable what, what the scenario is that I'm gonna get punished for.
Yeah.
So if you can't articulate what a snow is, I mean, does that mean we had some worries for twenty minutes or does it happen? Do I have to call the ruler and say, you have an inch or just three quarters? That would be the problem of trying to say when it snows.
About an inch?
Or, or what would it be?
Plowable snow, so if we take the plow, because we made the call that it, the streets gotta be cleaned up and there's cars in the way, then that's, it's on the car owner.
When you plow snow, you plow it today, and then you're gonna, then you're gonna, well, no, you can answer that, you can yell, because there's a speaker down there. So usually when you plow, you get it done for today, you usually go back the next day to do it, right?
Trying to figure out what you got missed?
Yeah.
Yeah, but like, like he says, the car winds up, one car like that or one car at a time that, you know, piles, okay, yeah. And it is the same people, frankly.
Yeah.
It's no different than in summer, we speak around the same car.
Yeah.
It's no different. I heard it. He said it's no different.
It's no different.
I mean, is it that hard that we put, you cannot be within thirty or forty feet of where there is non-plowed? This is hard, I mean, you're gonna have people just totally go after you on this one.
Just keep it even on, even on.
Have a public hearing next month and let's see what the public thinks.
I think so.
Yeah, if it's not favorable, then we don't move forward with it. If it's non-attended, then.
Well, whatever, pass it. We'll wait for them to complain in January.
But this technology stuff that you said, what, what's the difference? You can get on mass text lists for stuff. Um, what, what can, what can, uh, you find out about that from the school?
You'd have to have.
We will, we will check into it from the school and then, um, right now, if people sign up for our app, and I think.
Well, you gotta be able to put in the old people where it can ring to their voicemail on their landline phone yet. I mean, that's where we're gonna have, you know, like go out on a call or, or mass text like the school does. Because they call my house and they leave me a text.
Okay, well, I can, we can check into it.
At least just.
I'll talk to Eric Denny to start with and see what he has to say. He probably knows, so, yeah, we'll figure, we can figure something out.
At least give some options, okay? Thank you for, for research and stuff, so.
Yeah.
All right. Information items, utility commission meeting minutes. Unless there's anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, meeting adjourned.